Present, and we'd like to officially open the 2019 Montague Annual Town Meeting. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, members, and we'll start off with the reading of the warrant. "In the county of Franklin SS, either of the constables of the town of Montague and the county of Franklin, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Montague qualified to vote in town affairs to meet at Turner's Falls High School Theater, 222 Turnpike Road, Turner's Falls, Massachusetts on Saturday, May 4th, 2019, at 8:30 a.m. to act on the following articles and any motions which may be presented." I ask for a motion to waive reading of the warrant at this time. Moved in second, all those in favor? Aye. "Given under our hands on the eighth day of April, the year of our Lord 2019, signed by Michael Nelson, Christopher Batwell Sr., and Richard Kuklowicz Chair of the Selectment of the Town of Montague, Franklin SS, Montague, Mass., April 10th, 2018 pursuant to the within warrant, I have warned the inhabitants of the town of Montague by posting attested copies of the same in a conspicuous place in each of the post offices, libraries, and the town hall of the town of Montague at least seven days before said meeting as then directed, signed by the Constable of Montague." Christopher Williams, who's also the police chief. Okay. Let's move on to preliminary motions. Yes, sir. Excuse me. It's not on, hold on, Gary.
Selectment to, uh, to Select Board. Just as a clarification.
It is Select Board, I apologize. It was not on the, uh, on this particular warrant, but let me see here.
I will fix that.
Yeah. Deb will fix it. Preliminary motions. Motion number one, move that the, this meeting allow its proceedings to be recorded on tape, the tape to be kept in the custody of the town clerk and be classified as public property. Motion two, move that the moderator dispense with the reading of the article. Motion three, move that members of the Board of Selectment and other officers of the town not duly elected as town meeting members be allowed to sit within the rail and to be allowed to speak on any article without further permission from the town meeting. Motion number four, move that any member of the Board of, uh, Select Board, Finance Committee, not, not a duly elected town meeting member, be permitted to be seated within their respective body with the town solicitor in a duly designated area and to speak at will, subject to the decision of the moderator upon any matter before town meeting. Motion number five, move that the town meeting and the moderator subscribe to and adopt the following rules of the meeting. Number one, that the parliamentary manual for the meeting be town meeting time. Number two, that no item listed under the Department of Appropriation article of general government shall be reconsidered once the budgeted or enumerated items of the particular department or classification and that of a particular department or classification following has been considered and acted upon, nor shall any other article in the warrant of the meeting be reconsidered once two succeeding articles have been acted upon, unless such reconsideration is moved for the sole purpose of reconsideration of the method of financing the appropriation as voted under said article. Three, that registered voters who are not town meeting members duly elected and qualified pursuant to the Town Meeting Act have the right to speak at least once upon any item, classification, or departmental appropriation or article as contained in the warrant meeting of the meeting together with the right to speak at least once in rebuttal, and further right to speak upon said item, classification, or departmental appropriation or article is to be at the discretion of the moderator. Four, a voting member may appeal the ruling of the moderator on the right to speak to the general voting body, and the majority vote shall determine the further right of the speaker to speak further upon the subject matter. Five, in the event of a voice vote, if seven or more voting members doubt such vote, the moderator shall ask for a standing or show of hands vote, which shall then be the official vote of the meeting. Six, that the reading of real estate descriptions contained in any article be waived. And seven, on matters requiring two-thirds vote by statute, account need not be taken unless the vote is dis, is so declared as immediately questioned by seven or more voting members. Do I have a motion to accept the preliminary motions? Second. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Like to introduce the people up here at the front. Greg Corbo, of course, is our town council to my left. To his left, the Select Board, Michael Nelson, Chris Batwell, and Rich Kuklowicz. To my right, Deb Borbo, town clerk, Carolyn Olson, town accountant, and members of the Finance Committee. I'm sorry, what? Oh, I forgot Steve, I'm sorry, Steve. And I forgot Steve Ellis. And I mentioned Carolyn Olson and the members of the Finance Committee, John Handel, Jan Adley, Fred Bowman, Mike Naughton. Did I miss anyone down there? And Rich Widmer. Okay. We should also mention, we'd like you to not have any drinks or food in the building, no smoking on site, please take off your hats so we can see your faces, turn off your phones, and wait for a runner to come to you with a microphone so you're able to be heard on camera. Want to thank the MCTV crew, Dean Garvin, Deidre Pleasant, Joel Paxton, Janet Masucci, Mike Smith, Smith, and Steve Kozel for helping out today on this broadcast. You have a lot to do, obviously, so let's get to it with Article One. Move that the town receive and act upon the reports of the officers of the town and to receive the report of any committee and act thereon. Do I have a motion? Second. Moved in second, all those in favor? Clear that unanimous. Article Two, move that the town authorize the Select Board or other town departments with the approval of the Select Board to apply for and accept grants from the federal government, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or any other source, and to expend the same for purposes received without further appropriation. Do I have a motion? Second on Article Two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Declare a majority. Article Three, move that the town fix the salaries of all elected officials as required by law for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, as set forth in Schedule I, elected officials. I'm going to read the individual official and the FY '20 recommended amount. Moderator, $370. Select Board Chair, $2,355. Second and third members, $2,140. Board of Assessors Chair, $1,0765. Second and third members, $1,605. Treasurer Collector, $64,342. Town Clerk, $71,388. Board of Registars, Town Clerk, $840. Tree Warden, $1,0575. Board of Health Chair, $1,0765. Second and third members, $1,605. Do I have a motion on Article Three? Second. All those in favor of Article Three? Article Four, that the town fix the salaries of all appointed officials as required by law for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, as set forth in Schedule II. These are appointed officials. I'll read the position and the recommended amount for FY '20. Board of Registars, of there are three, $525. Emergency Management Director, $5,765. Animal Inspector, $1,0575. Barn Inspector, $1,050. IT Administrator, $2,100. Forest Warden, $1,0710. Rates per inspection, Assistant Building Inspector, $35. Gas Inspector, $35. Plumbing Inspector, $35. Electrical Inspector, $35. Appointed officials, Schedule II. Hourly rates, extra clerical ranges 12 to 1375 an hour. Election workers, 12 to 1475 an hour. Summer highway, 12 to 1475 an hour. Snowplow drivers, 15 to 25. Part-time police, $17 to $21 an hour. Part-time dispatchers, $17 to 21. Parks and Recreation, $12 to $20 per hour. Airport intern, 12 to 1425 per hour. Non-union employees, Town Administrator, $110,332. So the ra, I'm sure the ranges, I'm gonna read the ranges for fiscal '20. So the range for Town Administrator is 89,651 to 110,332. Town Accountant Range, $58,291 to $71,388. Chief of Police, 81,501 to 100,301. DPW Superintendent, 74,094 to 91,183. Director of Health, 58,291 to 71,388. Library Director, 58,291 to 71,388. Water Facility Superintendent, 74,094 to 91,183. Executive Assistant, the range is 2166 per hour to 2667. Police Lieutenant, grades 8.5 percent plus, 3651 to 3952. Police Custodian, 1452 to 1754. Do I have a motion to accept Article Four? A second. Moved in second, and all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, discussion, please. Is that my con? Dean?
Hello?
There you go.
Um, I just wanted to know if it was a, uh, if I, uh, hello, sir, my name's Richard Widmer, Precinct Two.
Richard.
Thank you. I just was curious to know if it was a fair question to ask how many of our town meeting members are employed by the town or have a spouse employed by the town?
Not sure what the procedure is on that, is that anything that?
I don't have those numbers. I don't, I don't, I don't have that information, Richard.
Okay.
But anybody can be a town meeting member whether you're, uh, an employee of the town or if your spouse is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. As, uh, let's move forward with a vote on Article Four, it's moved in second, and all those in favor of Article Four?
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare it unanimous. Article Five, that the town appropriate the sum of $9,828,399 for the maintenance of the several departments of town, said sums to be allocated in accordance with Schedule III budget, and for any other necessary charges with $50,000 to be raised from free cash and $9,778,399 to be raised from taxation. Now I'm gonna read these line by line, I'm gonna read the individual line and the recommended amount for fiscal '20. If anybody wants to discuss any of these individual lines, indicate with a hold, I'll check it off, and we'll come back and we'll, and we'll discuss each individual line item that's been held for discussion. Does that make sense? Okay. General Government, $113, Town Meeting, recommended amount for fiscal '20, $2,070. Select Board, $179,296. Finance Committee, $680. Reserve Fund, $60,000. Town Accountant, $79,0163. Assessors, $187,824. Treasurer Collector, $220,990. Town Council, $98,000. Information Tech, $46,000. Shared Cost, $65,659. Town Clerk, $155,236. Planning, $124,184. Zoning Board of Appeals, $1,200. Medic, $1,000. Public Building Utilities, $119,057. Total General Government, $1,340,872. Public Safety, Police, $1,624,912. Hold on, Police, okay. Police Cruiser, $51,600. Dispatch. I'm sorry. Police Cruiser? Okay, Police Cruiser, we'll come back to that. Dispatch, $305,255. Building Inspector, $138,047. Stealer of Weights, $2,750. Emergency Management, $5,0765. Animal Control, $20,057. Forest Warden, $1,0710. Tree Warden, $18,0285. Board of Health, $146,732. Total Public Safety, $2.315,113. Moving on to Public Works. Department of Public Works, $1,369,805. Flail Lease, numbers two through five, $24,090. Snow and Ice, $252,000. Solid Waste, $519,812. And Cemeteries, $7,000. Total Public Works, $2,172,707. Human Services, Council on Aging, $45,685. Veteran Services, $96,600. Total Human Services, $142,285. Culture and Recreation, Libraries, $404,274. Parks and Recreation, $1,036,721. Hold on, hold on, Parks and Recreation, okay? Historical Commission, $500. War Memorials, $1,300. Total Culture and Recreation, $542,795. Debt Service, $888,793. Intergovernmental, $104,608. Employee Benefits, $2,227,951. General Insurance, $93,275. Total Miscellaneous, $2,321,226, for a total town budget of $9,828,399. Do I have a motion on this article? Second. Okay, now let's go back and discuss the three holds that were put on, and start off with the Police Budget of $1,624,912. Mr. Earls, I believe, put the hold on that budget. Gary, if you'd like to give us your thoughts.
Is this on now?
It is on now.
Very good. Gary Earls, Precinct Four. First of all, I'm a clinical social worker, been trained in, and, uh, for a long time, I got an MSW from University of Connecticut School of Social Worker in 1972. My expertise is in child and adolescent, uh, mental health. Before I came down with something called Parkinson's Disease, I've traveled all over the country doing professional development seminars, approximately 300 of self, self-developed and self-delivered professional development seminars, to the tune of about a half a dozen all-day seminars, anywhere from four and a half to six hours, as well as half-day seminars, again, all over the country, a lot with, with educators. The position of the SRO has been up for a long time, and so have been around the country. There's a lot of goo, there's a lot of good stuff that, that happens with it sometimes, and there's also an awful lot of bad stuff that happens to it. Kids get beat up. School shootings have not gone down, unfortunately, sad but true. So my concern is that, that when you read the description of the position, that a lot of it sounds like a social worker to me. They're gonna talk about this, they're gonna talk about that, they're gonna get training in child and adolescent development, they're gonna get training in, uh, behavioral health disorders, which is a misnomer if I've ever heard one. That they're gonna do all kinds of things that, that I did in my professional training years ago. So to me, to put a police officer in that position, when in fact, if they want to be a social worker, let them go be a social worker. I'll help them train, I'll help them get into graduate school, that kind of thing. Anyway, uh, that's my overview of it. If you read the description of what they want to do, it's, it's not unlike a, a social worker, and it's not unlike a counselor. And as much as the school department or the police department wants to claim that, that they're not counselors, they're not even qualified counselors, read through the description. It's in, it's in the, the SRO handout that, that the school department left out on the front table. Anyway, if you have any questions, please direct them to me, and I'll be glad to answer them.
Are you offering any kind of amendment, Gary, or any?
Yeah, I would. Chris Sawyer-Laconne is gonna write the amendment for me, which would be that basically I want to remove the position of the SRO from the budget, as well as all attended costs and expenses that go along with it.
So you're talking about removing the budget for that one position?
Correct.
And the benefits for that position?
Correct.
And you have that amendment in writing?
Chris is gonna write it.
Oh, okay. And while you're putting that in writing, does anybody else have any comments on this? Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hi, Jennifer Lively, Precinct Four. As a point of transparency, I just want to let you know that I'm a town meeting member as well as a school committee member. Last year, I did vote no on this, um, in the budget, uh, because I didn't think we had enough information, um, at that time. I was not on the committee when the position was created, um, but this year I did vote it to continue forward in the budget, asking for more information to come forward based on, uh, this year of having the SRO in the school. We got some information this morning, um, which is much the same information that we recently received. Many people haven't had time to read through it or process it, um, in the amount of time we had just this morning, so I'd like to ask that Superintendent Sullivan come up and possibly even Dan Minor, the SRO, so that we can have a better informed discussion, um, based on the position being implemented this year.
Okay, before we, before we entertain that, I, I have to mention that the council has informed me that this motion needs to be just the dollar amount of the position. We cannot make a motion to remove the position because this is a lump sum figure for the operation of the Police Department. You can make a motion to remove the dollar figure for the SRO and the amount for the benefits, but you cannot make a motion to remove the position. Is everybody clear on that? Gary, are you clear on that? Okay, good. So what we need in that motion is an exact dollar number. Yes, Superintendent, I'll recognize you in a second, I just want to be very clear that we know what we're voting on, we know what we're discussing. Ms. Lynch, and then Superintendent, if you want to come on up here, and, and we will have that discussion as requested.
Kathy Lynch, Precinct One.
I'm gonna take Kathy first.
What's really disturbing about this is, one, we just got this document this morning. It was published on April 30th. I'm pretty sure not many people in this room had a chance to even read it. And that's deeply problematic, because this position on both sides of the budget was almost voted, it was passed by two votes last year. Anybody who's been a part of this town meeting knows that that's not usual. Usually, that's, if something's gonna go down, it's gonna go down, if something's gonna pass, it's gonna pass. In the meantime, parents have reached out to the school department and to the police department and asked them to define what the experience was gonna be with the SRO, what kind of training they've had, what kind of specifically diversity training, cultural training, and anti-bias training that person would go through. And those questions have been avoided, half answered, there's been no accountability. I, as a person who asked the question, was invited to private meetings, nobody will give me an answer on the record, and I think this is a major accountability issue. As a parent of children of color in this school district, this is not the environment to not be answering those questions. And I'm gonna urge everyone here to pay special attention, because when our tax dollars can just go freely and people can do whatever they want without being accountable to even town meeting members when they ans, ask questions, and when those people are told to fill out public record requests to get the information, when other people in this room don't have to fill out public record requests with the police, that's a problem. It's an accountability problem.
Thank you, Kathy, and I want to recognize Superintendent Sullivan, uh, and your point of information. Did David being at the point of order, or did Michael? Oh, David, please, your point of information, I apologize.
Is this on?
Yep.
Is this position funded not only in the Police Department budget, but also in the School Committee budget? I think the person writing the amendment might want to know that.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator. Through you, Mr. Moderator.
The mic isn't on.
The mic isn't on. Hey, use mine.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. So, just to be clear, right, we're voting on the, the town budget, and so, and we're specifically talking about the Police Department budget. At this point, the only motion that would be in order would be a motion to change the amount appropriated for the Police Department budget. While the, the school budget is in a separate warrant article, we can't do that as part of this motion. You should be aware that you, you can't, you don't have the authority to change the amount of the school district budget, because it's a regional school district. So all you can do with the school budget is vote it up or down. So, you know, as you're creating this motion, understand that, you know, this is a monetary motion for the, for the Police Department only.
Thank you. Uh, this gentleman in the middle.
Thank you. Mark Wisnewski, Precinct Two. I'm philosophically opposed to the SRO position. I don't like the presence of police in our high schools. I, I'm perfectly respectful of Police Department, but I think it's an inappropriate place to place police, and I think there's almost no evidence that it actually does what it's, uh, intended to do. I'm urging the person who's writing the amendment not to approach the school budget anyway. I am hoping that money stays in the school budget and is used for appropriate, uh, either educators or social workers, and I will support any amendment to remove that funding from the Police Budget.
Do we have any more comments on this? Do we have specific questions for the Superintendent on this? Ariel?
Ariel, Precinct One. When, uh, Town Council points out that the school district budget is one up or down budget, because there are these strong concerns, it just makes me curious as to what the process has been. Where in the process of crafting the school budget was there the opportunity for all of these different concerns to be heard, discussed, and included? It's just puzzling to me, and I'm willing to accept any answer. You know, if people should have petitioned and put on a, a different warrant article on this town meeting saying, "Get rid of the position," you know, people need to know what the process really is for advocating to reverse a very controversial vote. Thanks.
Superintendent, do you want to address the process that was undertaken to get to this point?
Sure. Hello? So, going into last year, the, the School Committee spent a lot of time discussing the pros and cons of having a school resource officer, and with the prior two police chiefs, we spent a lot of time talking about the pros and cons of an SRO, about the potential to find grants to fund an SRO. I've expressed ambivalence in the past about the trade-offs of having an SRO. So, and, and the School Committee Chair is here, and she could speak to this, uh, as well as Jen. As far as I'm concerned, that within the school district, the debate has been had often, the discussion has been had often. Now, we have an SRO, a year's experience almost with Officer Minor as our SRO, and, um, there, there was not a lot of back and forth at School Committee about retaining the SRO in this year's budget. If there, if someone had made it an agenda item, we would have been happy to talk about it. It's in, in the community that it's more controversial, and so this is the forum, if you've got questions, or if you could have come to School Committee meeting and raised questions all year long about this, if you had them. But just to, just to speak to, you know, the dollar amounts, I'm not necessarily want to help the amendment, but we spend, the school district spends $50,000 on the position, and the Police Department spends maybe 20 some odd, um, Chief Williams can speak to that in a second, I guess, uh, on the other portion of this, of the salary and the benefits. To Mr. Earls' concerns, I don't really care what it says in national literature about how SROs are characterized as, as counselors. In our district, the, the main reason I have become an advocate of this position has to do with safety and security. In our district, the main reason I have become an advocate of this position has to do with safety and security. It's not about counseling benefits of the position. And I, some of my best friends, I have a really close friend in Northampton who is a school adjustment counselor. I've worked with school adjustment counselors closely for 30 years. I have no pretense about, you know, Officer Minor, he's got great interpersonal skills, but he is not a professional counselor providing those intensive supports to individual kids. What he does provide is really valuable, and that is a measure of increased safety and security in a country that has shootings becoming commonplace, including a couple in the last week, couple of weeks. So that's the reality that I see. We had a student a couple of weeks ago who made widespread threats against the community, against the school. It may be potentially coming in and harming people, and it put people on edge. And the response to, by the school administration, they got information out about how that was handled. And because they know that Officer Minor is present and he knows the players and he's in the building, the temperature of the school community was much lower and calmer this time than it has been with recent things like that and the recent past. To me, that is why I want an SRO here. And to, just to make sure I'm not the only one out on a limb feeling that way, I did a survey of the faculty, all the staff at the secondary level this past week. Forty-seven people responded, and 55% of them said they feel significantly safer with the SRO present. And another 30% said they definitely feel better about it, and only seven people said it doesn't make any difference. So, we feel kids appreciate the presence of the officers, staff certainly do as a majority. And then I could go on and talk about, we have seven, 6.4 counselors already, we're going to add, we are adding adjustment counseling for next year, we're adding another dean of students. So, it's not an either/or thing for us. We want safety and security and we want supports for the kids that need them. And so, those things are all in place. In addition to a physical presence, Officer Minor does, the work he does is also very relationship-driven. It doesn't mean he's a counselor, but he works really closely with kids. We have kids on behavior plans whose incentive in their plan is to be able to spend time visiting with Officer Minor. That's the kind of relationship that he's got and the information he has about kids in our community. We don't have any arrests, zero, of kids in the school. So, the concerns about, you know, you see on a video of an SRO in South Carolina tumbles some kid's desk over and they wrestle to the ground or whatever, that's not us. We're nothing like that. And so, those are some openers that I would add to a discussion.
Do we have more comments up here? Who has the microphone? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Naton Cohen, Precinct 5. I'm also the Assistant Director of the Western Mass Recovery Learning Community. We're a grassroots community organizing and advocacy organization. And just through the course for me personally of living in Turner's Falls and doing a lot of this work with families and trauma survivors, you know, I've talked to a lot of families that don't feel safer having police in the school. And, so I think that while I honor safety and security as being really important values to strive for for our children, I think there's often the question when the police get involved of who's safety? And who's actually, you know, made to feel safer? And honestly, I was just trying to jot down the numbers that were mentioned about the survey from faculty. But I think that like 55% of like a small self-selective group of people who decided to even respond to a survey is not an overwhelming positive in my book. Like, I would want a lot more information than that about how people are really feeling as far as the faculty. And I know for a fact that many families, and many families with kids of color especially, are not feeling like they're getting fair treatment and support from the school system on a whole. And having another officer in there to potentially get involved in these like really punitive situations is worrying. And it's great to hear that there haven't been any arrests out of the school. But I would be interested in hearing like the number of restraints that have occurred or the number of seclusion or segregation incidents that have occurred that the SRO is involved in, or what other impacts on some of our struggling children in our community there might already be with this past year in this position.
The SRO is never involved in searches or disciplinary decision-making. That's not the job of the SRO. So that doesn't happen, including any kinds of suspensions. I think Officer Minor told me he might have been involved in one restraint this year related to maybe a fight that happened right in his presence, but I guess...
Yeah, sure, thank you. Good morning. I've put my hands on two students this year. One was a mental health issue with the assistance of his father in my office. That student later went to the hospital, so I would say that was definitely a mental health issue, and that was for his safety. Again, the father was there, our administration team was there. And then literally, I was walking through the cafeteria and there was a fight right in front of me between two females. I put my hands up underneath the girls, she was still fighting, I went up behind her, walked her out of the cafeteria, that was it. If you want to call that a restraint, that's fine, but I assisted her in getting her out of the room. I've put my kids on, I've searched no children this year, I've searched no students this year. We have a great administrative team that handles that. Again, somebody asked a question, "I'm not involved in discipline." I'm not in the loop with that. You know, do they run things by me once in a while? Yes, but it's not, "What do you think, Dan?" It's just to keep me in the loop.
Up here.
My name is Jessie Groneman in Precinct 6, and I just want to echo what's already been said and I haven't heard responded to, which is, and I appreciate everything that's been said so far, it's useful. But I haven't heard what kind of diversity training this person has had. I want to hear about that because I think for me, I want to make sure that whoever is in this position has training around making sure things are equitable and there's no bias going into how things are being dealt with. Thank you.
Anybody want to respond, superintendent or a chief?
Yes, so far this year, Dan went to a equity training. It's a one-day provided by engaging schools with DESE, restorative practice training, training collaborative and greenfield partnership with local school districts, juvenile law training, it's a two-day course, cultural diversity training, that's a one-day course. And he went to the five-day school resource officer training last, was it last August? And the two-day conference out in the Cape, that's a two-day conference that was just this last April. And a one-day training with the district attorney's office.
We have some more comments. Anybody who hasn't spoken yet, and we'll get to the people who have already spoken again a second time.
John Nelson, Precinct 5. Yeah, so I think it's really interesting to learn about what the school resource officer does and this and that, and the pros and cons. And I'm personally not really one way or the other on this, but removing the money from the police department budget with no language that affects whether or not we have a school resource officer seems like a meaningless gesture and will simply force the police department to cut corners elsewhere without actually removing the position. So, I think our time could be better spent on other topics, things that we could actually affect.
Thank you. Gene?
Gene Hebden, Precinct 5. Every chief since Pat O'Brien has stonewalled the residents of downtown Turners about a community policing officer by saying, "There's no money for it." And everything Superintendent Sullivan said about feeling safer, et cetera, could be, you could just substitute the downtown residents instead of the students. I feel like if there's money to put an officer in the school, then there should be money for a community policing officer in downtown Turners.
Okay, we have another comment over right in the corner, and then we'll come back to the middle.
Hi, Heather Holmes, Precinct 3, also the food service director for the district. And my office is in the back of the kitchen at the middle school, high school. And I just want to say that there is a different element. I don't know if any of you have ever been in a room with 200-plus 13-to-15-year-olds, but the cafeteria can get a little overwhelming. And Dan is there every day helping us manage this scenario. It's a very, you know, small part of his job, but I feel like it's really important because it has given a sense of higher safety to the staff members, the cafeteria members, the workers, who have no training in handling children's outbursts and the way they are. The staff is stretched really thin as it is, so you can't expect there to be a counselor in the cafeteria every day at lunch. So just Dan's presence has created a larger sense of safety on behalf of, I think, the students and my faculty, my staff. And I was there the day that the fight broke out. It could have been absolute mayhem, and it was handled immediately and swiftly with no injuries to anybody. So I just wanted to say that I've sensed the greater sense of support by having him present.
As the mic moves back over, is that amendment in writing now? Okay. I believe that you're supposed to provide that. And... But Carolyn has, Carolyn is very helpful. She has actually a number written out, so. Okay, Mark?
Mark Wisnewski, Precinct 2. I have to say that I, whenever I'm in any sort of governmental thing and a professional gives me anecdotal evidence, it just irks the heck out of me. We've had SROs in this country for years and years now. If you really want to support it, we don't support it with an anecdotal evidence in the school. We support it with statistics, we support it with whether people are actually safer in schools or not. We don't do any anecdotal evidence, and when we do a survey, a survey question that says, "Would you rather spend $50,000 on an educator or an SRO?" is a legitimate question. "Do you feel safer?" is not a legitimate survey question, and then it is very poor survey results. I just don't feel that anything that's been said actually supports the efficacy of this position, and I think we need to really look at that. I would like statistics on national SROs and whether kids are safer, whether there's less violence in schools, whether there's less shootings, whether anything happens that actually causes improvement in education. That's what this is all about, education of children.
Thank you. Thank you. Kathy?
I just want to add additionally that in the question that was just asked by the woman from Precinct 6, I believe it was, the answer was literally read from a piece of paper from the website, and it included all the trainings. The question was, "What specific training in equity, anti-bias, or diversity, cultural diversity, has the officer had?" And the answer, according to that sheet, because I read it on the website, is two days. Two days, one on cultural diversity, one on equity. We don't know what that training was, we don't know what was involved, we don't know how, I mean, I don't, I've never seen a person reverse all of their thinking based on a one-day workshop. I've never seen a person evolve entirely, I'm not done, sir, I have the floor, thank you. I've never seen a person entirely evolve because of a one-day workshop, and I'm not suggesting that our, this applies to our specific officer, it would apply to anyone. So I think that asking a question like that deserves more time and more discussion and more proactive discussion from the school department as well to alleviate the concerns that people like me have about this community. And I think that communication should be proactive, and I think that communication should be offered, not resisted and obfuscated.
Superintendent Sullivan, would you like to respond?
I'm a little offended by saying his training needs to be reversed, his thinking needs to be reversed. You did say that, that's exactly what you said. And the implication is that you have a stereotype about SROs. And I know you don't like stereotypes, and neither do I, but let's talk about a real person in a real position and not your preconceived notions, maybe.
No, and I'm going to stop this right now. Mr. Sullivan, if you want to respond to the comment, but I'm not going to have a back and forth with town meeting members.
Okay. The results of the survey we did, we asked about safety. I didn't feel it was my position to, it's not the faculty's place to say, "I think we should spend $50,000 on this versus that necessarily," and the stage wasn't set for that. But when asked if they feel that things are substantially safer, well over half said yes. When somewhat safer, another 30%, not making a difference was only 7%. And in response to an open response question, I've got 25 passionate, eloquent responses about what an important and great job Dan does. And I have three people who said, "Maybe it's not, you know, a good investment." So that is data. We can't give you data on an event that does not happen or a deterrence factor.
Melanie?
Melanie Zamoyzki, Precinct 6. First, is there a dollar amount yet on the amendment?
Yes, actually, the, there's going to have to be amendments to the police budget and the benefits line, but I'll just give you the numbers. The amendment on the police budget, which we're discussing now, would take the number from 1,624,912 to 1,571,090. That's just for the salary, and then the benefits would have to be reduced later. And the number, the exact number of the benefits would be 12,195. So the police salary in question is 53,822. The benefits reduction will be 12,195.
Thank you. And now a comment about the amendment. I am completely against this amendment. I believe the SRO is completely needed in the school system. Our schools are different now. I'm sorry to say that. But the attitude, the feeling, and the student bodies are different from what we had when we were in school. I'm sorry. And I think that in terms of safety and in terms of school needs, if we stick our head in the sand and deny that something like Parkland cannot happen here, you're wrong. I do believe that in terms of safety and training for the faculty in the school system, that this is a position that needs to be funded and not taken out of our school systems. He has training. He goes to training every single year. He is an officer that's dedicated to this community, and he is dedicated to our school system. And anybody who says anything different is wrong.
Any other comments? We have more comments up here, Ariel, and then we're going to go back to the back row again. I'm sorry, we have, Mr. Naughton, go ahead.
Ariel Elan, Precinct 1. I am in support of what the lady on the other side of the room said, but mainly I want to refer back to Mr. Wisnewski's comments. Mark is somebody that I've respected so profoundly in every way for so many years, but this is the first significant disagreement we've had. It absolutely shocks me emotionally and spiritually to the core to have anybody suggest that what we do in our community to support each other and to solve problems should be based on dry and abstract statistics. We aren't statistics. We are human beings. For me, relationship and learning more and more about right relationship in every situation is the only way that people can accomplish anything. That's the basis of standing here in this room. We have to be able to base our decisions on what is really happening here among people. Who is helped, who is supported, who is not feeling supported? This all has to come out, and we resolve it together. And statistics from anywhere else don't address that whatsoever. Thanks.
Thank you, Ariel. Mr. Naughton, did you have a comment? Mr. Naughton, did you have a comment?
Yes, I do. I don't know if he's on.
Mr. Naughton's mic. There you go.
Yes, I just wanted to comment that this is clearly a divisive issue. There seem to be valid points and concerns on both sides of it. I think that's really true. But whatever decision gets made today should not be the end of it. The people who decide whether to have a school resource officer are the school department and the school committee, and they have put it in their budget. And we can do what we can to adjust the amount that we fund in that budget and the amount that we fund in the police department, but if people feel strongly about this issue, I think that the proper forum to address it is with the school committee. And if you feel it's a bad idea, convince the school committee that they should not continue to fund it. They won't ask for the money to do so, and the town won't provide it. So I think that, as I say, this discussion will continue. There will be a vote, but whatever the decision, it likely won't be the end of the matter, and I don't think it should be.
Okay. Francia?
Good morning, Francia. Wizniewski, Precinct 2. There are a few things I want to amplify that the school committee member, Jen, had mentioned, that this issue came into their school committee for discussion this morning, and I think for them not having an opportunity to bring a recommendation before it's critical. In terms of statistic, I'm pretty sure the town manager wouldn't say to us, "Let's just..." You know, it's a combination of both. Sound decisions will be made with strong statistic foundation, too. As a person, again, I know that only like 12% is the representation of minorities and people of color in the schools. But last year, I was having this conversation with the current Chief of Police, and I know he actually said there was no such thing as data on minorities. And amplifying Nathan's comment is like, we're talking about how does this position actually does serve the people who was oppressed? Because they... Across the nation, there is data that say, that support the... That children who are minorities or are struggling, they actually get like profile hires. So these are just questions that I still have. How do you really work with the children who are already, you know, in having issues that are more mental health? And the Parkland comment is, so how do we choose which school get the police support? Because there are staff members also in other schools, and it was just not Parkland but Newtown at the level of elementary school. So how do we support and extend this, you know, support to other schools in our school district? Thank you.
Is that a specific question for the superintendent?
He can ask however he wants. I just bring those points of concern.
Michael, do you want to respond to that, or before we take another comment?
The SRO works across the whole district. The majority of his time has been spent at the secondary level, but he does go to the other elementary schools, including occasionally to Gil. I know the... At Sheffield, he's been called... Well, not only does he kind of randomly and routinely make public appearance, but the principal said that he's been called over somewhere around 10 or 12 times to help with specific things.
Okay. Go ahead.
My name is Alyssa Sorelli. I'm in Precinct 6. Like to start by saying I've been a youth mentor working in the schools and in therapeutic programs since 2000, and also spent some time in the high school and middle school. And I personally, even with all this experience, have learned a lot today, and I think that this question deserves more discussion and also more research, both looking at broader statistics and the unique environment that we're in here in Montague, in the Gil-Montague School District. Having spent some time last year in the school committee meetings, I'm also... Don't believe that that's necessarily the best place to have those discussions. It seems like maybe a task force or a subcommittee. I don't know what the format, best format would be, but it seems like to really get at the heart of this issue, we really need to consider the two aspects of safety, which are both physical safety and emotional safety, and of the staff and the students and the families. So you're looking at a lot of different pieces of data. And, yeah, I also want to name into the room something that's been said loosely but not as specifically, and that the presence of a police officer has a very different effect on people with white bodies versus bodies of people of color. There's a really fabulous movie about this called "The Hate U Give," if anyone's interested in looking more about, yeah, how the presence of a police officer affects people of color. And it's different. It's different, and I think it's really useful to name that. I know there aren't a lot of people of color in our community, but it doesn't mean that that's not important. And I heard you mention that it's not an either-or, like a school resource officer versus a counselor, but budgets are real. You know, we are limited by numbers and how much money we have. And I think it's useful to really look into the numbers around that question. Is the school best served by a police officer serving that role or another, or a counselor-type person? I think that's a really valid question. So I'm not sure how to negotiate this in the present moment with this amendment, but I would really like to see this question explored further.
Mr. Kukwitz, and then Mr. Pizzotti after that.
Good morning.
We need Rich's mic on.
She's working it. Good morning.
There you go.
Good morning. I'm Rich Kuklewicz, Precinct 4, and a member of the Select Board. Couple of questions and then thoughts. You mentioned the training that Officer Minor has attended. What, if anything, as a former friend I used to have would say, has Officer Minor done to help train staff and administration around safety and security? Has there been any benefit from having him here when or if, God forbid, there might be an event? Can somebody tell us a little bit?
Chief Williams, do you want to take that, or...
Well, he assists with lockdown drills. They do what, three a year, Dan? Yeah, three or four a year. I mean, he's human. Everybody that here is human, having conversations with people on a daily basis, I would think, would make them feel more secure. The national average of school shootings, by having an officer on scene, 70% end up in suicide or shot by police. That's one of the main reasons we have school resource officers. The other parts are Dan deals with crisis. That's what cops do. People are in crisis. We come in, we intervene, we calm them down, we get them to the proper counselor at that time. They need medical attention, we get medical attention. If they're in DCF custody and they're having a problem with DCF, Dan reaches out to DCF and works things out.
Thank you. So to me, this discussion... To me, this discussion belongs with the school committee. They're the ones that have requested to have an SRO. They've debated it in the past and continue to debate it. The police department budget is a reaction to the requests from the school committee to have an SRO. So the money that's been funded is to provide the SRO that the school district is requesting. So to me, the place to have this discussion is not on town meeting floor, when we don't have all the facts and emotions run high, but to have it at school committee meeting. And further to that, if there is that much passion in this audience... I recently read that there were five openings on our school committee, and nobody was opposed on any of those positions. So I challenge you to put your money where your mouth is. If you have a problem, the way to affect change is to become involved in what's going on in your community. We have people that complain about everything that happens around town, whether it's from the Select Board down to the school committee, down to the zoning board, yet we don't have volunteers or people running for office to help fill those positions. So I support an SRO. I believe they're needed. Unfortunate, but they're needed. I believe they serve a very useful purpose in our school districts, and I've seen positive effects firsthand at Franklin Tech with the SRO that is funded by the 19 communities of Franklin County Tech District. They do make a difference. They do help the district. We did have an SRO in Gil-Montague District for many years that was based on some grant funding, and when the grant funding went away, the SRO went away. It didn't mean the reasons the SRO was requested and was in position back then went away. It just meant some money went away. I believe it's a critical role. I've said it before, I'll say it again. I would rather try to explain why we spent the money than why we didn't. Thank you.
Mr. Pizzotti. Is the mic on?
Is it on? Yeah, okay. Patrick Pizzotti, Precinct 1. I just... I wasn't here last year when this was voted on. I was out of the country, unfortunately. But I just want to respond to what seemed like an implication that our police officers are biased and that they need training not to be biased. And I've had many dealings with Officer Minor. I've had many dealings with Chief Williams over the years, and I just want to say that they've always been extremely professional. I've seen them deal with sensitive situations, always very professionally. And sometimes it seems like there's a bias against police that maybe needs to be rethought. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Let's come back over here. John Nelson, and then Gary, and then back up to the top. So come back around. Yeah.
John Nelson, Precinct 5. I call the question.
We have a motion to call the question. Do we have a second? Motion to call the question is non-debatable. All who are in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
I'm declaring a majority for the ayes, so now we're gonna vote on the amendment. Ken?
Okay, I'm sorry. So we have to make... The motion on the amendment has to be made, so Mr. Earls...
Can I challenge the calling of the question?
Excuse me?
Can I ask that we see if there's seven people who want to challenge that calling of the question?
Are there seven people that...
On the entire budget, if you're calling the question?
You're absolutely right. Okay, so first of all, I'm gonna get the ruling from our attorney. Yeah, the question was called on the amendment, which is what we were discussing.
Wait a minute for that mic. Can you get the mic?
I'm just trying to...
Go ahead, Mark.
Point of order. I do not believe an official motion for the amendment has ever been made. We've discussed it as if it has been made, but nobody has said, "I move that this amount be removed from the police budget," and no one has seconded it. So right now, we're discussing the entire police budget.
No, you're absolutely right.
If we call the question, we're calling the question on the entire budget.
You're absolutely right. I have the amendment in writing here, so what I'm gonna do is read the amendment, and we'll see if there's a motion on the amendment. Okay, and then we'll move from there. So I'm gonna declare the call of the question out of order for now, because we haven't really discussed the amendment. Is that fair? Okay. The amendment is to remove the amount of $53,822 from the police department budget, which would take that budget from $1,624,912 to $1,571,090 million. That's the police budget.
I thought it was $20,000.
Now, we're talking about the amount for the police salary for the SRO, which is $53,822. Okay? Now, if we... First of all, do we have a motion on that amendment?
I'm sorry. What's that?
Do we have a motion to reduce the police salaries by $53,822?
Point of order, Gary.
There were two amounts that were given to the panel. One was the salary, and one was the benefits.
Yeah, the benefits we have to take up separately. It's a separate line item.
Okay, gotcha.
This is just the police department salary. So do we have a motion to amend?
I move the... Submit the motion.
Point of order. John, you have a point of order?
John Nelson, Precinct 5. I understood that just a part of the salary was from the police department budget and a part was from the school committee budget.
That's correct.
Is this only a part that comes from the police department budget?
Well, as the town council just mentioned, you can't change the school budget. Is that correct? Great.
Right here. Thank you through your moderator. So because you're part of a regional school district, there's a certain procedure that has to be followed in enacting the school committee's budget. So in the first instance, the school committee votes to submit the budget to the member communities. The member communities then have the opportunity to vote up or down on that budget. If you were to change the number, that is considered a no vote, in which case there is no school budget. It has to go back to the school committee. The school committee has to recertify the number and come back to a second town meeting. If the budget fails again at a second town meeting, then there is a third district-wide meeting to either approve or disapprove the budget. And ultimately, if there's no budget, it's approved by the Department of Education. So the other thing is that with the school budget, you know, it's a bottom-line budget. Town meeting does not have the authority to say to the school committee how it spends its money. So it's really not open to town meeting to say, "We're gonna remove a certain amount of money due to a resource officer." The money might be removed, but it's still up to the school department to decide how to spend what money is left.
Wait a second. We need to get the microphone over there.
John Nelson, Precinct 5. Just to clarify then, so the money that technically the school committee funds for the school resource officers being included in this amount in the police department budget that actually they don't really fund, so it's reducing it by an amount of money that they don't technically have to provide for the SRO?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Let's bring the mic down a little bit. Before we do that, Carolyn, you want to clarify this a little bit, so people... This is Carolyn.
Hi. Just because I think there's a sound...
Hold on. There you go.
She's always beating something. Usually it's me. Just to give you a little background on how this budgeting piece works, when we have something like the school resource officer for either the tech school or for Gil-Montague, the town has to appropriate the entire cost of that officer, including benefits. And then as a separate item, the school district will include in their budget an amount that's reimbursed to the town through the revenue side, but we still have to budget the entire amount on the town side, which is included in both the police budget for the wages and the uniform allowance, and then the benefits for the Medicare retirement and health insurance. Just if there was anyone that wasn't clear on that.
Okay. In the back.
Hi, Elliot Ascorra. I live in Precinct 5, and I'm hoping to join in the recent... Or the upcoming election as a write-in candidate. Oh, sorry. Learning the procedures. Yeah, I just wanted to say that, first of all, I'm probably the person who was most recently in high school here. I did go to high school with active shooter drills regularly occurring, and no, having a police officer in my schools did not make me feel safer personally. I would say that because of the relationship between the institution of policing in this country and communities of color, it's important that police not be in our schools. I don't think there's an issue with having someone in a school whose job is safety and security. I think that is perfectly reasonable in our world today, but I do not think that individuals should be a member of the police with the legal and institutional power of the police. So I do think it's important that we, in particular, look at the budget that the police department is providing towards this position and not just the money that the school is providing. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Hello? Hold on. My mic is not on.
Is there... Dan?
Thank you. Before we go any further, all right, we need to get this amendment motion on the table. Okay? So the motion to call the question, I'm gonna rule out of order at this point, because we're talking about an amendment that has not... The motion for which has not been made. We need to make that amendment. Does someone want to make that amendment? Gary? Okay.
What?
Are you making the amendment motion now?
I just have one question. I just have one question.
Gary, we need to make... We need to put the amendment on the floor to debate it.
Yes.
Do you understand?
I move the amendment.
Do we have a second? Okay. Now...
Thank you.
We have the amendment on the floor. Now we're discussing the amendment, which is, at this point, all...
Why can we not designate that that be taken out of the SRO budget? Why can we not specify that position? Because it seems to me that if they have money in someplace else, they want to do it, they're going to do it anyway. And that's not, that's really not what this is all about. So whether or not we're going to have one. I think we should be able to designate, since it's a line item, it's a line item item in the Police Department budget, that we should be able to delete that line item.
Well, actually, the line item is for the Police Department Public Safety Budget. You're talking about, this amendment deals only with the salary of $58,000, $53,822. Does not deal with the specific SRO position. We actually discussed this earlier.
Why can we not designate a specific position?
Why can't, the question is, why can't we designate a specific position? Is that the question?
Yes.
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. So, you know, we have a separation of powers in government. So town meeting is the, excuse me, the legislative branch of town government, and your role is to appropriate funding. Once that funding is appropriated, it then goes to the executive department, in this case, the Police Department, to expend that money for the purposes of their department. So, you know, the police chief is going to have a certain amount of money to work with, and he's going to allocate that money to the resources as he deems appropriate, because that's what his job is to do. So in this case, you're voting a budget, and you're going to reduce, you may reduce that budget beyond what was requested. And if that is the case, then the chief has to figure out how to move his resources around in order to conduct his operations in accordance with that new number. But because there's no separate appropriation for a school resource officer, town meeting doesn't get to say, I mean, I think what you're saying here is advisory, and the chief, I would imagine, would take that into account in planning his staffing, as would the school department, I imagine. But, you know, town meeting doesn't get to say, based on the way that this warrant is set up, how the department spend their money.
John Nelson, Precinct 5. I call the question.
We have a motion to call the question on the amendment. Do we have a second? All right. David, the motion to call the question is not debatable. It wasn't the last speaker, Gary was. This is calling the question on the amendment. It's been seconded. We are voting now on the amendment, which would... He just called the question on the amendment. I'm sorry, you're right. All those in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. We are now going to vote on the amended motion, which is to reduce the Police Department budget by $53,822. All those in favor of reducing that budget by that amount signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We're going to have to have a count. All right, do we have to count?
No.
Okay, I need someone to volunteer to count on each of, in each of these sections. Who's willing to be a counter? Okay. Peter? You? All right, and then over here.
Don't forget the stage.
And the stage.
And the stage.
Okay, let's do this, let's do it again. All those in favor of the amendment signify by putting your hands up and leaving them up until you're counted.
Stand.
Actually, stand up, Peter. Those in favor of the amendment, please signify by standing.
Have somebody count the stage. Have Rich count the stage.
One, there's one on the stage.
Do we have numbers? Eighteen.
Okay. Seven? Two? Okay, everybody sit down that voted yes. Now, all those opposed to the motion, stand up.
Twenty.
Seven.
Seven, seven on the stage.
Twelve.
Twelve?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Eleven.
Eleven. We're tallying up. Everybody have a seat when tallying it up. The amendment is defeated 28 to 50. So 50 no's, 28 yeses. All right, we're going to move on now to the second hold, which is the Police Cruiser budget, $51,600. Mr. Detmold, put that hold. Do you have a question specifically? And wait for the mic to get there.
I see that the, is the chief still here? Through you, Mr. Moderator, I see that the budget line item for a Cruiser has gone up, what, some very large percent? Could we have an explanation for that? I'm always concerned that the police do spend an awful lot of fuel, fossil fuel, driving around, just driving around and driving around. And it would be wonderful if someday we were spending more for a car that was more fuel-efficient, so I'm hoping that that might be the explanation.
Chief, would you like to take that?
And the reason there's a significant increase is last year's Cruiser, it's just an Explorer. It wasn't outfitted. The hybrid gasoline electric engine is, so it's $3,500 more than the regular gas Cruiser, so that's why there's a significant increase. Because I want to go with the hybrid. I would like to, yes.
But...
Good job.
Any other questions on this hold?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Rich.
Chief, I believe some of the extra money too was around outfitting it because of the body style changes and so forth. Is that correct? So in other words, the Cruiser, I understood, was not $51,000?
No, the Cruiser itself was 37, and then the outfitting is the extra.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any amendments on this? Nope? Okay. And the next hold was $136,721 for the Parks and Recreation budget. Mr. Widmer.
Thank you, Richard Widmer, Precinct 2. I just want to say that I really think that what the role that Parks and Rec does in our, Parks and Recreation does in our community is really, really important. I think one of our strongest assets is our river and our land, and that we ask $130,000 to take care, to take care of that large area and great resource is really badly underfunded. And the role of Parks and Rec in supporting the physical and emotional development of our youth, and creating places for people to be together, and also supporting throughout our community, supporting intergenerational activity, supporting healthy activity for every demographic in our community, drawing outsiders, visitors into our community, that Parks and Rec is really, you know, I would add a zero to the Parks and Rec budget in a second. But today, I'm asking that, last night my head exploded when I realized that we do not have a single soccer goal in town. We don't have a single soccer goal in town. And my head exploded. So, and I wondered if that was, I wondered if that was a subtle, I wondered why that was, so I won't go deep into that. And so my amendment, I'd like to propose an amendment to increase the budget for Parks and Rec by $4,000 for the purchase of two new quality movable soccer goals, please.
Do we have a second? So we have, we have an amendment and a second to increase that budget by $4,000. Any discussion? Point of information?
They can increase the budget, but they can't say how they need to spend it.
Okay, I have a point of clarification on that amendment, it was just handed to me, that the budget amount can be increased, but you cannot mandate how that money is spent. So you can, as a town meeting, increase that budget by $4,000, but you can't tell the Parks and Rec Department how to spend it. Point of information, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Wizniowski, Precinct 2. Do you not have to find that money somewhere else in the budget in order to increase that line? I thought that you couldn't increase the overall budget line item at the end.
Well, that was my question, but...
Well...
There has to be a, Carolyn?
Although I agree with the sentiment, I just don't know that you're allowed to just increase it without...
I'm unclear of that as well.
The way this would work, if I can borrow, take some time for Mr. Corbo. We have a budget that's balanced at this point. Technically, town meeting can appropriate something without additional funding. What happens then is when we actually get to the tax rate and we do our estimate receipts and whatever, we either find that we can in fact do it, because maybe we had some additional growth that came in, and we can do it, depending on how, what the dollar amount is, obviously. If we can't do it, then basically we have to come back to town meeting to cut a budget somewhere.
Everybody understand that? Okay, any other comments on the amendment? Mr. Wizniowski.
I guess, given that information and the fact that 4,000 is probably attainable, I'll support the amendment.
Thank you. Any other comments on the amendment?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Jen.
So I'm Jen Oddly from Precinct 4. I really appreciate the sentiment of what Mr. Widmer is proposing. I do want to caution you all that I think it creates a dangerous precedent for us to make decisions like this at the last minute. Another way that this could have happened is that during the budget process, which is like a six to eight month process, somebody could have said, "Hey, we should get some soccer goals for the town of Montague," and that could have been in the budget already. So at this point, yes, we can make a decision to add $4,000 to the Parks and Rec budget, and then the director of Parks and Rec can decide what he wants to do with that money. Or there are other ways that we could raise $4,000 for soccer goals, and we could give it to Parks and Rec and say, "We want you to use this money for soccer goals." Or we can try and get it into a special article request for the next special town meeting. There are a lot of different ways to do this, but this way sets it up so that every time we have a town meeting, people can make amendments like this for things that made their head explode the night before town meeting.
Any other comments on the amendment? Mr. Detmold. Wait for the mic, please.
No, I'm going to oppose the amendment, not because I'm against soccer, but because I'm against someone from the Finance Committee who knows that budget requests should go before the Finance Committee and should originate from the department head. That's just putting the cart after the horse, or something to then, as a member of the Finance Committee, tell us on the floor who trust you to do this, that we don't have time to consider it ahead of time, and even though the department head never asked you, we're going to add some money anyway. I'm opposed to that method.
Any other comments? Right over here. And before we get there, Mr. Widmer, response?
No, I'll wait.
Oh, okay.
Heather Holmes, Precinct 3. I think this question should maybe be directed to John Dobus, because my son plays soccer, and I think they have goals.
Is John here? There you are, John. Do you want to come down and address this? By the way, it should also be pointed out, if you are a town meeting member, you should be seated in the front here, and if you're not a town meeting member, you should be seated in the back, away from the voting. Just be clear, that's standard operating procedure. John?
Well, this is very unique. First of all, I appreciate Mr. Widmer for his sentiment. We do have soccer goals. They're kind of run down. I understand the process as well, so if, you know, who am I to deny more money, I guess? It's an odd situation to be in. If, if we want to go through the more appropriate methods for next year, I would be okay with that. And I think that we can probably survive this year with the budget where it is and not focus soccer goals in that area, so...
Thank you.
I'm all for more money, but...
Any other comments on the amendment? Anybody else? Oh, sorry, Mr. Widmer, go ahead.
Sorry, Jen. I was busy with lots of activity, thinking about lots of issues in my own life and working on the Finance Committee with you. And last night, I realized that we didn't have soccer goals, and as we move forward and preparing to spend $24 million, for that money, I want soccer goals.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis?
Yes. I just wanted, yeah, I'm waiting. Thanks. I just wanted to note also, just so the town understands, that actual responsibility for the maintenance, the vast majority of the maintenance of the parks that are managed by Parks and Recreation, as well as other park spaces, is actually the purview of the Department of Public Works, and there is a separate budget for that. So just so everyone understands, there is some additional funding to actually maintain the physical infrastructure of our parks that is outside of this particular budget.
John?
John Nelson, John Nelson, Precinct 5. John Nelson, Precinct 5. I call the question.
Motion to call the question, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is a vote to call the question, which is on the amendment to add $4,000 to the Parks and Rec budget. All those in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and I'll vote on the amendment. Again, this would take the amount from $136,721 to $140,721. All those in favor of the amendment to add $4,000 to the Parks and Rec budget signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
No.
The amendment is defeated. We will now go on to the main motion, which is the final budget amount, which is, remains What's that? I'm sorry. I don't have that here. Hold on one second. One moment. I want to make sure we're on the right. Okay, so Article 5, moved that the town appropriate the sum of $9,828,399 for the maintenance of the several departments of the town, and said sums be allocated in accordance with Schedule 3 budget for any other necessary charges, with $50,000 to be raised from free cash, and $9,778,399 to be raised from taxation. Do I have a motion on Article 5? Second. Moved in second in Article 5. All those in favor of Article 5 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Majority rules. And I move on to Article 6. That the town appropriate the sum of $2,295,227 for the purpose of operating the water pollution control facility and associated pumping station, said sums to be allocated in accordance with Schedule 6, water pollution control facility budget, with $215,000 to be raised from taxation, and $2,080,227 to be raised from sewer user fees. The recommended amounts for FY '20, wages and expenses for the water pollution control facility, $1,431,562. Debt service, $533,163. Employee benefits, $279,702, for a subtotal of $2.244,427. DPW subsidiary wages and expenses, $42,800. Capital outlay, $8,000, for a total subsidiary budget of $50,800. Total budget, $2,080,000. Total budget, $2,295,227. Do I have a motion on Article 6? Second. Any discussion? Point of order, yes? Hold on, wait for the microphone, please.
When you spoke, you said Schedule VI? In the...
Did I have that wrong?
In the body of the language, it says Schedule IV. Are we voting on Schedule IV or Schedule VI?
I think I read... It's Article VI, it's Schedule IV. It said, in my, I had the typo on mine. It said... No, it's not a typo. I apologize, I misread it. It's Schedule IV, you're correct. Thank you very much for pointing that. So it's Schedule IV, with $215,000 raised from taxation, $2.080,227 to be raised from sewer user fees. Any other comments on this article? All those in favor of Article 6? All those opposed? Majority has it. Article VII. Moved that the town appropriate the sum of $95,400 for the purpose of funding the operations, maintenance, and debt service of the Colly Building. Said sum to be raised from Colly receipts reserved for appropriation. Do I have a motion on Article VII? Second. Moved in seconded. Steve Ellis, do you would like to comment on this?
Sure, just so everybody understands, the Colly Building is a town-owned asset. It is rented out.
Yeah, closer to the mic, Steve.
Apologies, it's hard to tell whether we're broadcasting forward here. Can you hear now? Okay. Just so everyone is reminded, or for those who haven't been here before or informed for the first time, the town owns the Colly Building at the corner of Avenue A and Third Street. That town asset is, was actually improved with substantial grant funding from both the state and federal government. There's a 30-year hold on our ability to sell the building, and so we have leased it. For the last several years, we've had the benefit of having a single tenant, the Center for Responsive Schools. They just renewed their lease for an additional three years. This is an element of our budget that essentially functions as self-sustaining. Our annual intake of lease income exceeds our expenses, and allows us to save up a capital reserve that is dedicated specifically for that building in accordance with the requirements of the original grant funding. So this does not present any new cost to taxpayers, and if there are any questions related to that building, I'm happy to answer them.
Any other comments or questions on this? We have those gentlemen in the front here.
George Gada, Precinct 2. This is the first I've heard that, this is the first I've heard that we weren't unable to sell it for 30 years. I was just curious when...
Sorry, that was...
When would that time period be up, just out of curiosity?
Sure, so we are rounding the corner on 15 years, I believe it is. The EDA has a 20-year hold, that is federal assistance. The state has a 30-year hold, and, you know, that came through the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Any other questions or comments on Article 7? Mr. Detmold.
Just since we have the opportunity, could we have an update on the roof of the shea, because it has been a problem?
Well, this is a diff, it's out of the scope of the question, so I'm going to not entertain that.
Truly? I mean, this is the shea...
Colly Opera House and the shea are two different buildings, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Steve.
I would just note that we are in fact making some improvements to the adjacent Colly Bill, to the Colly Building specifically, and so people will see improvements to the exterior facade of that building, as well as the windows, in order to frankly, not only make it more beautiful, but also to preserve it and protect the town from potentially larger capital investments in the future that will coincide with work on the shea roof, which is in the process of being bid presently.
Any other questions or comments on Article 7? With that, we can vote. All those in favor of Article 7 signify by saying aye. Opposed? Declare it unanimous. Article 8. Moved that the town appropriate the sum of $53,078 for the purpose of operating the Turnus Falls Airport, with $6,094 to be raised from taxation, and $46,984 to be raised from airport revenues. Do I have a motion on Article 8? Second. Moved in seconded. Any comments or questions? Right on the front here.
Veronica Fan of Precinct 1. Just want to remind people, I don't know why some of this is coming from taxation. Last year, we had this conversation again, and I think we were trying to figure out why the airport wasn't self-sufficient, so I don't know if someone wants to speak to that.
Anybody up front? I'll take that. Where's Brian? Brian, come on down to the mic. And then we can have people direct their questions to you.
Thank you. So last year, we were drawing roughly $12,000 plus from taxation. This year, we're a little less than half of that, so hopefully in the next two to three years, we will be fully off the tax. I'm slightly optimistic it will be this time next year. We have a couple of great projects in line that we've picked up over this past financial year, so I'm optimistic that next year, we won't be having this conversation.
Thank you, Brian. Any other comments? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Wazniewski, Precinct 2. Last year, I was one of the people to comment on this. I'm going to accept the effort to reduce it by half as sufficient, but I think that next year, I won't vote for any line item for the airport. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments on Article 8? Up in the back?
Hi, Susan McQuade, Precinct 1. I just want to ask a question as to why this amount can't be funded by an increase in user fees.
Thank you. Yeah, so our user fees right now are about the high end of the region, almost to the point where if we were to increase them anymore, we would start to actually lose our based aircraft and our base tenants, so we'd actually see a decrease in our revenues. So we've pretty much extended all of our revenue options as far as they can go right now. Thankfully, this coming financial year, we had some new construction and some new growth that's going to allow us to increase, but I think if we were to increase any more than our square footage leases right now, we'd actually see a decrease in based aircraft, which would cause us to be more from taxation.
Any other questions? John?
John Nelson, Precinct 5. A 29% increase in revenue for fiscal year 20 is a pretty big boost. How's that coming about?
So far, it looks very promising. We saw a slight increase in FY '19, and our big moneymaker is going to continue to be the revenue that we're going to generate from non-aviation projects. So we own a rental property, and we also have a couple of off-site properties that we're looking at either leasing out or opening up to leases. So there's three or four major projects that are within a couple of months of taking off, so to speak, and we're hoping we'll cover that and then some.
Any other comments? Oh, right there.
Hi, Pat Beck, Precinct 1. My understanding was at one of the last town meetings that the funding we approved at that point was the last we were going to do for this particular venture, and I don't know what's changed around that.
I know at the last meeting, I had spoke to our strong efforts to reduce it. I don't remember making a commitment that this was going to be the last year to fund the airport. I did say that there would be a significant reduction going into FY '20, being that this is only my second year here. It's been an uphill battle to get us to where we are now. I'm not sure if anybody from the Select Board or FinCom can speak to that, but I don't remember making a commitment to make it zero.
Rich?
Hi, Rich Kuklitz. I'm Precinct 4 and a Select Board member. I was one who also wanted to see taxation go to zero. I've heard Brian's comments at Finance and other meetings as to why the small amount from taxation is requested. I will say, having seen what's gone on in the airport, I fully support the funding request. Brian has been, in all my years as town meeting member, which are numerous, I think almost 30, Brian has done the most positive change in that airport that I've seen. There's more viability there, projects are happening, things are, you know, things are getting done, and he's gotten several grants this year to, you know, improve the infrastructure, improve vehicles and mowing, and worked with the town, so I support moving forward, and hopefully next year, he will be fully self-sufficient. We won't, we will always see an airport budget article on town meeting. My goal is to see an airport budget article that's fully funded by the airport and the ability for them to bank some reserves, so that when there are matching fund projects, they'll have money in their account to match those funds for future projects as the airport continues to expand and grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Any other comments on this article? Right over here.
Mark Viss, Precinct 1. I think the airport plays an important role, not only in Montague, but Franklin County. If you read the article the recorder had about Orange Airport, it's what comes in and out that we don't see, I think, that also supports us and our livelihood throughout the valley and other people that have jobs. So I support anything the airport needs, and I do see a great improvement in the airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on Article 8? Seeing none, we can vote. All those in favor of Article 8 signify by saying aye. Opposed? Simple majority, passes. Article 9. Moved that the town appropriate the sum of $1.085,007 for the purpose of paying the Franklin County Technical School District for Montague Share of the Assessment for the yearly operation of the Franklin County Technical School. Said sum to be raised from taxation. Do I have a motion on Article 9? Second. Moved in seconded. Article 9. Rich Kuklitz, you're up, as a member of the Franklin Tech School Committee.
Thank you. Dennis Grader, who's in the audience also, a member, been on for many years now. I'd like to ask if we could have Superintendent Martin come down and do a brief discussion.
Thank you for having me. I would just like to provide a brief overview on what's been going on at the Franklin County Tech School in the last year, where we are with enrollment, where we are with enrollment for the Town of Montague. In the last year, we were recognized by the National AP Honor Roll as the only vocational technical school in the state to demonstrate improved proficiency with our advanced placement test scores. During the summertime, we have been running a tech connect program with more than 100 middle schoolers, getting involved in programming, web designing, carpentry, robotics, CAD/CAM, and things on that nature, to get them exposed to vocational technical education. We had to increase our special education staffing to support a dramatic increase in our special education population. We have approximately 40% of all of our students in grades nine and 10 over the last several years that require special education services. Just to put that in perspective, the county average among all of our regional school districts is approximately 17%. So we have a lot more to do in that area to try to help support our students. During the last year, as you might have read in the paper, we have built a house in the Town of Irving with our students. We have a foundation that is supported through the Greenfield Savings Bank, and what happens is they supply... Excuse me, I'm recovering from bronchitis. They supply all the materials and the financing for the house project, and our students build the house. Then they sell that house. What profit they get from that, they buy the next lot and the next materials and supplies. So the important thing about that is that involves five of our SHOP programs. So when students go out and they interview for jobs, they are in a unique position to demonstrate real, hands-on skills and knowledge. We received a half-million-dollar grant to revamp our welding and manufacturing program, and we have expanded that space as well. We continue to seek out competitive capital skills grants to improve all of our vocational SHOP programs for the real benefit of our students having 21st century skills, so they can be employable when they leave Franklin County Tech. We are going to be getting in the fall of 2019, a new veterinary and animal science program, to provide students a pathway to receive an AVA certification, which is an applied, approved veterinary assistant, which gives them a pathway to become a veterinary technician at a two- or four-year college down the road. That was something done with a lot of data and research over the last several years, and we found that that was a real need. As you might remember, at this town floor about four years ago, we eliminated a SHOP program that was significantly under-enrolled, and the interest that we have in our veterinary science program would currently make it the most popular SHOP that we have. Our cooperative education has 73 students out on job placements that are paid. That's the highest we've had in our school history over the last 10 years that I've been there. We have a total of 96 students involved in various types of internship, job shadows, and paid co-op placements. Getting back to our enrollment, our total in district enrollment is 463 students for the fall of 2018. That goes back to a number that we had in the fall of 2015, of 463. Prior to that, we were in the 470s and 480s. We are not returning to that number at this particular point in time, but we have stabilized from where we were from the last two years of our drop. Just to give you an idea, we were on the Town of Montague, there were 85 students from the Town of Montague in our October 1 count. Out of those 85 students, 53 have come from Great Falls Middle School. The others have come from various school districts that, you know, they were never in the middle school here at Turnus Falls. They're at Four Rivers Charter, Drury High School, Amherst Regional Frontier, they're at Greenfield High, Harpent Academy, Mohawk Pioneer Regional, Ralph Seemaha, White Brook Middle, and that kind of gives you an idea. So we get students, when you see our enrollment, it's not all coming out directly from the middle schools, it's coming from member residents here that are attending other school districts as well. We are anticipating an increase in our enrollment for next year. We currently have about 45 applications. We usually accept about 88% of those applications, so we can anticipate about, approximately about 40 more students coming in. Back in February 27th, we had a FinCom meeting here at the Town of Montague. At that particular point in time, I projected that our enrollment would increase from the 85 that we currently have to about 109, knowing that the application process was still ongoing. And with that ongoing, we're probably, I can project right now, we're probably closer to about 112, 113 for next year total enrollment from the Town of Montague. The assessment per pupil for the Town of Montague is $12,414 per pupil, which is lower than our average of $13,320. We do have a... I'm almost through this. We do have a capital assessment that we started this year, two of it, at $29,828. It's a 15-year bond that was able to provide some paving, to thank you, and a new roof in windows and doors, and get our facilities up to par over the last 40 years, so that is in year two. And we are operating now in an $11,721,000 budget at this time. At this time, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for the superintendent? They're over here.
Rick Ducharme, Precinct Three. Just a quick question, Mr. Martin. I kind of lost track of the figure that you were talking. How many people do you have right now from Turners and do you have a projection from the middle school just from Turners who might be coming in here? Because I'm kind of concerned about that in regards to the impact that's going to have on Mr. Sullivan in the next article.
Yeah, we have currently eighty-five and as I presented with the FinCon, we are projecting about a hundred and twelve total students coming in for next year.
Well, that'll be roughly thirty, right now thirty students possibly from the Gil Montague Regional School District.
That would be about right.
Any other questions on this article? Any questions for the superintendent?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Jen.
I'm trying. I'm really sorry to make you talk more. In light of the conversation that we just had about school security and safety at Gil Montague Regional Schools, could you talk a little bit about what the tech school has in place? I'm hoping you'll speak about more than just your SRO, if you do more than just your SRO, but I feel like it might be helpful for us to have a sense of what our other, the other high school in town is thinking about in terms of safety and security.
One of the most crucial parts of having an SRO is that collaboration with the State Police Task Force. So a few times a year, at least three times a year, we have the State Police Task Force come in and provide live lockdown drills and training for all our staff and students. At times, you would not predict. We are, have really grown in a way in which we just don't have lockdown drills while class is in session because the stats show us that most of the school shootings and things happen during non-class time, whether that's before school, at the lunches or in between the bells. So we have all our lockdown drills now conducted in those timeframes. So our staff has a really good level of confidence on what to do in these type of situations. Lieutenant, I think Captain Carmichael from the State Police Task Force is one that heads that up. But that's all coordinated through our school resource officer as well. We're really big on that aspect of our school safety and protocols and it works really closely with the administrative team as well and we don't have any restraints from the SRO or things on that nature. We're pretty consistent with what's been done here at Gil Montague.
Any other questions or comments?
Moderator?
Yes, sir, Ms. Don.
Just a point of clarification on Mr. Ducharme's question. You said that currently there are eighty-five students from Montague at Franklin County Tech and you're projecting next year a hundred and twelve. Mr. Ducharme seems to take that as meaning that the extra twenty-seven would be coming from Gil Montague Regional School District, but I think you explained earlier that that's not completely true, that some of them are not currently in Gil Montague Regional School District and they will be attending the tech school. Montague is responsible for them, but they are not currently in the district. Do you have figures on how many students currently and projected that represents?
Out of the forty applications that I looked at this week, there were eleven of those students that either homeschooled, charter school, they're coming from another school district, they don't currently reside, so I don't know if that number helps a little bit. It's pretty consistent. If you look at the eighty-five that we currently have and fifty-three were from the Turnus Falls Middle School, you know, the incoming class kind of represents that percentage of students coming from other places as well.
Any other comments?
Kelly Pereira, Precinct Three. I just wanted to say that my child is one of the children who is coming from a different school district to Franklin County Tech next year and is likely going to need some special education. And this is the time that we should be considering the fact that, I think in our society at this point, considering the cost of education, higher education, that tech schools are an important asset for us.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we can vote on Article Nine. All those in favor of Article Nine signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Article Ten. The Town appropriate the sum of ten million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars for the purpose of paying the Gil Montague Regional School District for Montague's share of the assessment for the yearly operation of the Gil Montague Regional Schools with fifty thousand dollars to be raised from free cash and ten million, one hundred and seventy-nine, seven hundred and thirty-seven to be raised from taxation. Do I have a motion on Article Ten? Second. Moved and seconded. I invite Superintendent Sullivan to come down. Anybody have any questions or comments on the school budget? Mr. Wisnewski, as Mr. Sullivan comes down.
Mark Wisnewski, Precinct Two. I'm not such a gadfly that I'll hold up a school budget over this, but I'm not going to fail to mention that I'm always against using free cash to fund budgetary items that are reoccurring. I think it's bad policy. The proper way is the next article where we appropriate it for a project. It's not proper to use free cash in budgetary funding. Thank you.
Does anyone in the finance committee want to speak to that decision? John?
Am I on?
Not quite.
You will be. In a moment.
The motion.
Am I on yet? Well?
Here you are.
Here we go.
Try this one. John, could you try this one, please?
Oh, you'll hear me in stereo. Some years ago, we funded, I believe it was a hundred and fifty thousand or thereabouts from free cash. And one of the concerns I have had or campaigns I have had is to reduce that and we have been reducing it by about fifty thousand dollars a year for the last several years. So I think we are meeting the concern that you have, which is to fund our current operations out of our current revenue. It would be punitive, I think, to cut it all at once and I think the approach we've been taking is correct. I won't forecast what we're going to do next year. It's always dangerous to predict the future, but if it was fifty thousand this year, it was a hundred thousand dollars last year and I believe seventy-five, something like that. So we are headed in the right direction and I think the end is in sight.
Thank you, John. Superintendent Sullivan, would you like to address this article?
Sure. Thank you. There's handouts that detail our budget for you and I prefer to answer questions about the details than talk at you about them. A couple of general comments I'd like to make is that I feel like the district continues to do a commendable job. We have some outstanding teachers, very talented and passionate in what they do and our students are being well-served with the resources at our disposal. And if you look at districts in the area, you see that we are all under varying degrees of financial stress right now. And I'm really proud to say that Gil Montague has been managing this situation really well, I believe, on several fronts. Our school committee governance is strong, our relationships between the district and the communities are open and effective, teachers and staff are working hard to deliver an engaging and rigorous curriculum. Our principals, they're spending a lot more time finding it somewhere to engage families in creative and energetic ways. We've got an event going on, Hillcrest Elementary is sponsoring a story walk today and Sheffield Elementary's got a music program going on tomorrow afternoon. So those things are all going well. And on the financial end of things, we have weathered a Medicaid storm that could have been really an upheaval for us, I think, in as best a way as possible and that's coming out okay. We've trimmed costs wherever possible and now, because of those kinds of efforts, we're seeing, not because of, but in addition to that, we are seeing an increase in state aid of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is, I won't get into the weeds on this with you, but we're seeing real increases in chapter seventy aid instead of this minimal thirty-dollar-per-student whole harmless aid we've received historically for quite a long time. So we're turning the corner in that respect as the legislature starts to put more money into funding for low-income kids and ELL students in particular. So in that, that's just to frame things at the beginning here. In terms of the Montague assessment, the school district has developed an FY twenty budget that was cognizant of and fits within what the finance committee and select board present as an affordable assessment. The total assessment is, it's a four point two percent increase. Historically, for the last five previous years, it's, well, it's four point two seven this year and it was, and it has been, a four point two percent average. So it's consistent with our past history of assessments. In terms of revenues, I mentioned that state aid increase is new and significant. That's really all I wanted to say about revenues, except we are increasing the amount of spending we plan on taking from our E and D account, which reflects a larger-than-typical anticipated contribution at the end of this fiscal year, in part due to a legal settlement. So we're planning on drawing down an additional, or one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in E and D for the coming year, but it'll still increase the overall E and D balance to approximately four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars at the end of FY twenty. In terms of expenditures, I'm very happy to not be presenting you a list of five or six job cuts, which has often been the case today, but on this event, but today it's five additional positions. And those are a bilingual paraprofessional, we need an addition there, a middle school life skills teacher, a secondary dean of students, a board-certified behavior analyst, a Sheffield special education teacher and an additional school adjustment counselor. So as I mentioned earlier, you know, we're putting more resources into supporting students' social and emotional learning needs. That's where the additional funds are going this year largely to do that work. Let's see, just other highlights about the spending. We're continuing a multi-year plan to provide secondary students with Chromebook computers. We have purchased a new elementary math program called Bridges and we're excited about that. We anticipate purchasing a new elementary reading program in the year ahead. So those are some of the highlights of what we plan to do with a bump in funding. A couple of contextual notes about things, and you're right to ask about where our students are going when they leave middle school. Right now, I ask about this every couple of weeks, how many kids seem, look like they're leaving eighth grade in our middle school to go to tech school? And right now it's thirty-one, but there's, there may be a few more is the waiting list. It was thirty students last year, thirty the year before that, but before that it was more like usually twenty, eighteen and twenty, maybe twenty-two. So all across the state, there for lots of, well, for a couple of big reasons, students are gravitating towards vocational education right now. And the legislature, the governor in particular, are putting lots of money in that direction. The capital skills grants Rick mentioned, the state's kicking in like seventy-five million dollars over the next five years to buy equipment and materials to support, you know, vocational types of education. So we're highly aware of that. And we also lose students through choice and charter. They go to the fine program at the Four Rivers Charter School. So we, as a kind of full-service public high school, we're kind of like the Sears department store of things in a competitive marketplace. We've got, you know, the Amazon equivalent of education on one side and the, and the highly service-based kind of small shop on the other and we're in the middle. And so we have a situation, we've got this grant, Power Town of the Twenty-First Century Grant, that's been providing time and funding for our faculty and in our local employment agency, people, the regional employment board people, people from GCC, people from our collaborative, they're all getting together to try and think about what does high school, a public, full-spectrum high school, need to do in this competitive day and age to retain students. And we definitely need to keep our core mission of preparing kids for college, for competitive four-year colleges, but we also need to do more for the students that are, that's not where they're headed for any number of reasons, by just interest or for financial reasons. And so we are in dialogue with the tech school. We're, in fact, we bought a van through a grant where we're going to have kids going back and forth, taking schools on both campuses. So I'm interested in seeing us expand different types of innovation pathways. There's grants from the state to explore ways to support getting students more, a better understanding about careers that are promising and they're part of Massachusetts, whether it's healthcare or information and technology. We're looking at providing students with comprehensive kind of internships and coursework that's geared towards different careers so that our students that are not headed to college are better well-prepared and better prepared. And we also want to do it in a way that doesn't necessarily run, not necessarily, doesn't run counter to what the tech school offers, although they continue to add things like advanced placement courses and foreign language and market themselves as college preparatory. And they get a lot more funding than we do, so it's a difficult situation for us. But we embrace the work and look forward to innovating and making change. Finally, I'll say, because we're all in a tight spot financially in western Massachusetts, all of our districts and our, by the way, our state legislators are doing a really great job supporting us and advocating for our needs in Boston. But what I wanted to say about that is we are exploring, we are interested in forming a formal study committee and in the legislation, statutory legislation, it's called a planning committee, where we would take a serious look at whether or not we might want to regionalize with Pioneer Valley Regional School District. And this is not a budget item for Town Meeting, but I was encouraged by lots of people to just mention this. So I also don't want to get into the weeds of how exactly we would structure that committee, but we are interested, it looks like it's a feasible combination that could work fiscally. In other words, if we became a six-town region or maybe Irving's included, a seven-town region, there are financial advantages to that. And what's really exciting is the idea that the money saved by that combination could be, stay in the schools. And there's any number of things that that could help us do. It could help us bring back things that we've lost in terms of supporting and remediating, you know, kids that are struggling. It could help us add courses back that we've lost, really the rigorous, high-end kind of academically challenging courses that we've lost over time. It could also help us with a career-oriented path and it could also help us with going down a performing arts road and taking full advantage of a theater like this and really bolstering our music and arts programs. So I can't, I'm only one person from the district, so I can't say which of those roads we would go down, but they're all kind of exciting possibilities and as more people, the more people take a look at the numbers, they believe that it is worth studying this further to see if it's worth doing. So I guess I'll stop there and see if anyone has questions for me.
Thank you, Superintendent Sullivan. Any questions for the superintendent? Mr. Ducharme, wait for the mic, please. And John, actually, before we get to Rick, John?
I'm John Handel, Precinct Five. You mentioned the Pioneer Valley cooperation. Possibly in nearer term, collaboration would be with the tech school itself. Is there anything that you are pursuing that would coordinate the Gil Montague organization with the tech school organization, whether it's transportation or staffing or anything? Any prospect for the future?
In the short term, we are looking at kids taking classes, CAD/CAM course In, in the short term, we are looking at kids taking classes, a cad camp course for our kids going there, and I think a human physiology and maybe a foreign language course for their kids coming to our campus. So that's definitely in the works. In terms of staffing, we don't have any plans to, to share staff. We've looked, one time we looked at sharing a librarian, we've talked about a facilities person. Nothing's come of that in the, in the near term. And in transportation, have we done anything with buses yet?
We did do a transportation review with the tech school as part of that grant, and we have been sharing some transportation services with the tech school, where if we have kids coming from Athol, they could ride the bus in from the tech school. Yeah, we're, we're trying whenever possible to work with them to share costs for transportation.
Thank you.
Rick?
One of the questions that I'd like to ask Mr. Sullivan, and this is usually one of the questions that you hear from me every year, and I don't think he mentioned it this morning, is how many students have left the school? Or in the past few years, you've averaged about 1.5 to 1.6 million dollars that have left the district. What is it on this year's budget? Because I don't see it on here like you've had in the past.
I have a table I've developed and used every year with all the committees.
Just the number would be fine. Is it still going to be 1 point something million dollars?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay.
Between choice and charter.
Okay. So I've got about four or five questions, and I apologize to the other town meeting members. Could you at least name maybe the top two or three places that the students from Turner's are going?
Yep, they go to all of the elementary schools related, that feed into Frontier, so Sunderland, Whately, Conway. They go to Four Rivers Charter School. They go to, somewhat to Chinese Immersion, Greenfield some.
Okay. The other thing, you talked in the beginning about the amount of money that we've been paying because of the health SNAP food that we've had in the past. Roughly, how much have you taken out of our budget or not? How much have you paid in, in total, or maybe even in a month's period of time for, in lawyer's fees?
Um, I don't know what the total.
I mean, is it $2,000 a month?
Well, it's done now, but it helped us achieve an outcome that brought significant revenue to the school district.
Okay. So we're still paying lawyer's fees in regards to the?
No, well, I think there was one last month, it was like $100. But, but, you know, so the, you know, that was, that was a problem of like $950,000. One of the things we worked out through that lawyer was a 20-year payback period, so it's, so it's reducing our Medicaid aid reimbursement, $42,000 a year for 20 years. So the attorney achieved that for us in addition to a settlement.
Besides yourself, how many other people in the administration make more than $100,000 a year?
Uh, one, two, three, I think three.
Okay. On your administration, how many male members are in the administration?
Well, it depends on what you mean by administration, but, but.
Principals, vice principals?
Two, well, two. Like our facilities director behind you is, you know, maybe not technically one of the administrators, but male, but so two.
The other thing, I don't know if any people saw in the beginning of the year, and I didn't like to see it, there was an article in the Boston Globe, there were two things that caught my attention. They listed the 50 lowest-paying schools in the Commonwealth. We ranked number eight. We were number eight.
For what, teacher salaries? Average teacher salaries?
It was about $57,000, and you had 92 employees. Now, I, I'm not going to worry about that, except for the fact, it's kind of disheartening to see that we were the eighth one. As a chuckle, the number one worst school in the Commonwealth was a school off the island off Massachusetts, and the salary for that person was $45,000, one teacher, two students. And we had, the other thing that I saw, I'm going to ask Mr. Sullivan, how many AP classes you have? Because also another article later on in the Boston Globe, you only had 20 people who took the AP exam. Do you pay for the AP exam, or do the students pay for the AP exam?
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head whether or not we pay the fee to take the exam.
Okay. And you heard Mr. Sullivan say earlier about the fact that a lot of the students go to Frontier. Frontier had 159 students take the AP exam in. The last thing that kind of bothers me, because like I say, I did have a question I'm going to ask somebody through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Select Board and to the Finance Board. A couple of weeks ago before, right before vacation, there was somebody who transferred here to the tech school, and I asked why. They said, "Rick, there's nothing there for us." And that kind of hurt me, because I'm a graduate here, my daughter was a graduate here, and to have somebody say there's nothing there for them. That's why my daughter left one time to go to GCC to take classes that she wasn't going to be, have to take, that she didn't want to take. And then kiddingly, she said, "There are three or four in the sophomore class who are also contemplating leaving next year because there's nothing here for them." I don't like to hear that, because I am a graduate, I'm proud of it. All right? And it does kind of bother me. And I just don't like to, to hear that. It's, it's kind of too bad, but you see the number of people in other schools who are taking AP exam. I don't know how much it costs, when I taught at Marhar for 35 years, we paid for students to take the AP exam. If they were going to take my course in AP Stat, it would be paid for it, but not come out of their pocket. We would find a way to pay for it. So that's pretty much what I had to say.
I believe we probably do. I just don't want to tell, say something I'm not positive about.
And the last thing I'd, I'd like to do, because I know there are other people who rather talk before, instead of me, through you, Mr. Moderator, in regards to, in terms to the Select Board and to the Finance Board. I know when a budget comes, as long as it is within a guideline, you heard Mr. Sullivan say there was probably 1 point something million dollars that gets sent out, even though you all voted unanimously for the budget. Is there anybody up there on the stage?
Here we go.
That really bothers them, and will admit it, that 1 point something million dollars leaves the district?
So can I, I found it finally here. So 1 point, in the current fiscal year, 1.448 million dollars is the net loss after 1.4 million goes out with students choicing out. $835,000 for students going to charter schools, which totals 2.2 million, and then 818,000 returning to the district through students that choice in. So that's our situation, which has been stable, but awful since about 2013.
So it is, it is awful.
Absolutely.
You don't have, your problem isn't any different than anybody else, it just seems that Frontier is gaining the benefits in the area for students going to their school, you know, especially when, when it's maybe sophomores and juniors who are taking the AP exams, and when they have 159 students take it. And I, I know it only said 20, but I know you don't have a large enrollment in your sophomore class. It's a very small sophomore class. So when I saw 20, it didn't really faze me, but I'm just, I was curious, some schools, the students have to pay for the AP exam, some students don't have to pay, and I just didn't know what it was. So thank you for your time, but I'd like before somebody else, if somebody from the boards could just, does it bother you that 1 point something million dollars leaves the district, or between the last five years, between 7 and 8 million dollars has left our district?
Rich?
Yes. Wrong, wrong, Rich.
It is, it is troubling, but.
Turn his mic on.
Hello?
There you go.
Okay, thanks. Well, of course it's troubling, and the Finance Committee and Select Board have those discussions with the school district when we have quite lengthy meetings, at least once, sometimes even more than once, with the district around budgets and what's going on. It's an unfortunate fact of some changes that were made in education reform. This isn't the place to debate whether we like them or not. I think it's, it was intended to try to make school districts better, but there are always unintended consequences. That coupled with the declining populations and, you know, declining number of students available to the district, then, you know, kind of exacerbate the situation. So sure, it's troubling. I don't know what we can do short of having some legislative changes that look at what the negative impacts are. I see the kids going to the tech school on a biased position, because I'm on the committee, but just remember, that's a Gil-Montague, that's a Montague, not Gil-Montague, it's a Montague school. Tech school is a Montague school. We own about 20% of that school. So it's not a competing school, it's a Montague school. But regardless of that, of course it's troubling for students to leave, but we also need to make sure that we can provide the best possible education. That's why, for one, I'm excited about the possibility of us working with the Pioneer District towns to form a larger, more vibrant district that will be able to start offering the courses, as Superintendent Sullivan mentioned.
Any from the Finance Committee want to discuss? Mike?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. And yes, I think we're all bothered by it. But I'll, as Rich Kuklowich said, it's a product of the way schools are financed in this state. We have different opinions on the committees. I personally believe that it's possible to believe that it's a good thing to give people choice in their lives and education, especially education of our kids is a big part of our lives. While at the same time, believing that the way that Massachusetts chooses to fund that ability to choose is seriously flawed and needs to be fixed. And we have had conversations with education officials and our state legislators who agree with us on that point, and something has to be done, and the legislator, legislature is talking about it. I personally would like to see a world in which kids can choose to whatever institution they feel meets their needs the best, and that every institution is given adequate funding. Gil-Montague has not been given adequate funding over the past decade due to the way the state formula works, and it has struggled, and its struggles have affected its enrollment. It's been kind of a vicious cycle in some ways. Happily, at this point, things seem to be, have gotten under control, and things, hopefully they will continue to improve, but it has been a very bad situation. It is not yet a good situation, but I think everybody involved is doing the best they can.
Thank you, Mike. Francia?
So a couple of weeks ago, I have the pleasure to attend a meeting with Representative John Lewis, the superintendent was in there, and it was on these very issues. So it looks very hopeful. Our local representatives are really willing to speak up for support, and this is an issue that it needs to be fixed. And the problem is, we poor communities keep paying for children that can move into wealthier communities, and we keep lagging behind. But I just want to take a moment to commend the superintendent's process on the middle and high school principal, because I think it was a great collaboration between community members, educators, and children, and who choose between 15 very qualified people who wanted to be in our school district. It was a hard choice. It was, what it shows is that people want to be invested in our community. And my kids got excited by Ms. Menard, who, she promises to bring robotics, and she is an entrepreneur, you know, female science, strong, you know, unexcited. And I know next year, hopefully, we will see that she's going to bring more APs, and, you know, how can we help your success and make our district more appealing for students? So just congratulations on the process, it was great, and good luck with the principal. And just for everybody to know, that it was a very thorough result, and it was very carefully looked at. So, and you took the recommendation from, unanimously from the group that served in that, so thank you.
Mark?
You're right there. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark was just in Precinct Two. A couple of things. I, I think our son has taken the AP, and I don't think I've ever been asked to pay for anything for the testing, I believe that's true. Also, I want to say that our son also attends GCC, which is a great benefit to our community. Both our kids do attend the Greenfield, I mean, sorry, Greenfield, go back to my old town, Turner's Falls High School and Middle School. And then I want to talk about the fact that, you know, for 10 years in Greenfield, we, I, I was in the discussions of the fact that however you feel about charter and choice, it is pretty much statistically proven that kids go from poorer communities to richer communities to go to their schools. This is due to property, because we fund through property taxes, so richer towns often have better schools, and this is one of the reasons that we all have to continue to advocate on a state and national level for more equitable education, because poor communities suffer. We will always suffer under this system, and Greenfield will always suffer under this system. I don't think we've actually stabilized, I think what we've done is bottomed out, and right now we need to figure out how to, to fund our schools in a better way on, in a state level. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Right, right down in the front here. Wait for the mic, please.
Chris Sawyer-Lasano, Precinct Five. Just one question. In those choice out numbers, does that include pupils that need to be placed into special education programs that the district itself cannot provide?
Uh, yes, yes and no. Kids that choice out, sometimes they are special ed students, they may need any range of services. But when we place a student in a collaborative situation, a day program, or even a residential program, those are not, those are not choice students, and the expenditures for those kids are not included in the numbers I was just giving earlier.
Okay, that's what I, and do you know approximately how many now you have had to place into a special situation?
What do you mean? Out of district placements?
Out of district, yeah. Because I, I know you've made.
Eleven.
Eleven, okay, because I know you've been working to bring more of it in-house.
Yes, we have, and we've done, we've done a really good job.
You have indeed, thank you.
Any other questions? Right back here.
I would just like to know if the district collects data on why people choice out. Is there an exit survey that's issued once a student declares that they'll be going to another district?
Every, we've done that twice. We've done kind of extensive surveys twice since I've been here with good response rates, and I think that data is on our website both times. It's, it's both open response questions and multiple choice questions, and it's, it has to do sometimes with convenience, but often, but it's got to do with the quali, what they, they say is the quality of the instructional program, the offerings, the academic offerings, the extracurricular offerings, and also, it's got to do with their perception of who their children's peers are going to be. And that's often the highest kind of data point, but it's not one we talk about a lot.
Do you have plans to expand those surveys into every year so you have consistent data and not just random samplings?
Nothing really random about it, but probably not every year. Probably continue to do it every couple of years. It's, it's expensive and time-consuming.
Yep.
And the information doesn't change.
Hi, Eileen Maryanni, Precinct One. This has been very informative. As a longtime member of the town meeting process, I have listened to so many debates about school budgets, and in the last two or three years, I would say, they have been smooth and not contentious because of all the planning that has gone on before you present the budget, budget to us. The meetings between the Finance Committee, the meetings with the School Committee, the Select Board. So you have presented a budget to us, however it plays out in terms of what particulars you are using the money for, that is viable for our town. So I want to. So I want to commend you for that, and I want to commend also, I said this to him privately, but Jeff Singleton, who worked for many years to have this come to fruition. And so that's a little bit of the history. The second part is looking at your visioning for what you are trying to do with what you have, to making those connections with Pioneer, to trying to figure out how to best serve all the children of our community. So both those factors, I want to make sure the School Committee and you as a superintendent and your staff understand how much those of us who value education appreciate what you're trying to do.
Thank you, thanks. Lots to be done.
I just want to expand on what Kathy Lynch said, which, I just want to be clear that what the district has done is surveyed families of students, resident families who don't attend our schools, who left at some point. And so those might be families that made that choice 10 years ago, they might have made the choice this year. What Kathy's proposing, which I think is really an excellent idea and is not labor-intensive, is an exit interview, or even just a piece of paper, that when somebody withdraws or chooses not to enroll, they say, "Why? We ask them why." And I think we could do the same thing with students who are entering and their families who are entering. We can say, "What's bringing you here?" There are a lot of reasons why people choice out. I want to be clear that I know lots of families who choice out, and often the reasons have to do with work, they have to do with childcare, there are lots of reasons other than dissatisfaction, but we need to know more about what's making people make the decisions that they're making, and that's a reasonable request.
Mr. Wimmer, did you have anything, or? Yep.
Richard Woodmore.
Yep, there you go. Hold on, David. Mr. Wimmer, then Mr. Detmold.
Richard Woodmore, precinct two, speaking now not as a Finance Committee member, just speaking as a town meeting member, but also more speaking as a parent to, of a child who's in the school, and also a parent of a child who's left the school district. There's a lot, I really appreciate what you shared, sir, about you being a Turner's Falls graduate and what that means to you, and what that's meant to your family, and how that's changed. I moved to this community a few years ago because I felt that this, that my, that as an American, this is a place where I could share that experience with my family. I moved from overseas. And my fifth grader chose, we chose him not to be in the school because he was headed for a teacher, a fifth grade classroom, and a fifth grade teacher who was damaging to my older boy. And we didn't want to have a teacher who's now no longer in the school district. So that was, that's a different reason for choosing to not be in the school. And as a soccer coach at the middle school, last season I had 33 kids on my team, and yet we don't have a varsity soccer program. So I think that it's not just academics, that there's many reasons here. And so it really shows to me that the values of, that are happening in the school are not aligned, the values of the leadership in the school are not aligning with the values of the community. Sports is so important to this place, that's another reason why I'm here. So I know students who will choose to not be in Turner's Falls High School because they want to play soccer on a competitive team.
Mr. Detmold?
Yes, David Detmold, precinct five. And I just want to echo what Eileen Mariani said about, I think the excellence of your leadership and the administration's efforts to deal with what is a really sad set of circumstances. I regret that you're running a school district whereby we have to make decisions to, in a sense, you know, protect ourselves against the fact that our society is armed against each other with inadequate mental health resources for the population at large, and inadequate, you know, gun safety regulations, sensible gun regulations. I regret that. I regret that you're running an administration or administering a school district that has to function in a competitive environment with other poor school districts. That's a terrible way to formulate public education for our youth on a statewide level, and you're, we're the victims of it. And I would also, I'm thinking about what you've said about the benefits, the risks perhaps, and certainly the benefits of looking into the regionalization with Pioneer, when in fact, what we're also having to consider in that equation is the fact that our kids, young kids, will be spending more time on the buses, traveling from point to point. And I just watched Lydon lose a battle to save their elementary school after they were convinced long ago of the benefits of regionalization. I'm sympathetic to Warwick's efforts there, too. And I think when we regionalize, we lose some of the local control, obviously, so we need to weigh that, particularly when some of the carrots that are being offered from time to time, when the legislature is feeling generous, such as regional transportation, do not get fully funded over time. Given all that, the question I wanted to ask you, Mike, was how do the population, how do the demographics look coming up through our district right now, from kindergarten level on up? Are we looking at a stable population as time goes by, from your point of view, within the two-town district we have right now?
So, our enrollment from pre-K through grade eight has remained pretty steady for the last six or seven years or so. It's the, I mean, it's declined somewhat, but it's the high school where we're really losing kids at an accelerated rate. And the natural population of students we could draw from is, you know, people say we're losing population in Franklin County, which is true, there's not as many babies and children as there was, but in Montague, that's not really the case. The number of kids here is declining a little, so, you know, it's a place where I could make an excuse, but it's not accurate. It's a loss of the kids that are here is really what our challenge is. So the potential for who we draw on is pretty steady in this part of Franklin County. I know the natural student population for Pioneer has declined, and its student population has declined even more rapidly than ours has. So what we would be, if we were thinking about regionalizing, we would, and we would need to ask people this, if, you know, we wouldn't just guess about what they might do, but the thinking would be, not only would we want to capture the student population as it is now, K to 12, but we would want to offer something that's going to excite kids to return to that district of those six communities. And I just wanted to say that, to the first part of what you're saying, David, I think it would be important if this gets studied to kind of keep the question of regionalization separate from closing small schools. Those aren't the same topic. And losing control to a larger group is what, definitely what happens. But the consultants that have worked for us so far, they haven't proposed, they haven't proposed doing anything with elementary schools, closing them. They see a savings and an efficiency and an excitement of larger class sizes if we had a single high school and a single middle school. That's what's, that's the feasibility test that's kind of been floated so far.
Any other comments? I saw a hand up in the middle. John?
John Nelson, precinct five, I call the question.
We have a motion to call the question. Do we have a second? Moved and seconded to call the question. All those in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we're now going to move on to the article. Article 10. I'll repeat the article, that the town appropriate the sum of $10,229,737 for the purpose of paying the Gil Montague Regional School District for Montague's share of the assessment for the yearly operation of Gil Montague Regional Schools, with $50,000 to be raised from free cash and $10,179,737 to be raised from taxation. All those in favor of Article 10 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We declare a majority. Article 11. Moved that the town appropriate the sum of $76,670 for the purpose of replacing sidewalks and curbing at Turner's Falls High School, including any and all incidental and related costs, said some to be raised from free cash. We have a motion on Article 11. Do I have a second? Any discussion on this? Superintendent, do you want to explain, or?
Joanne, our business manager, and Heath Cummings, our facilities manager, will do that.
Okay.
Yes, I have Heath Cummings here, our facilities manager, and he can speak to this article.
Hi, everybody. So the sidewalks here at the high school have an awful lot of damage done to them over the years, mostly attributed to possibly poor construction, but...